Anytime you have a bucket situation, the fear is, especially from folks that are elected, what if our claims get out of control? And what if we have these enormous claims? What we've done is we build in a stop-loss. Now, a stop-loss is like a secondary insurance claim. And that's where your losses stop. So we can build you, you have a safety net that if your claims in the bucket reach a certain level, you're done. You buy a stop-loss insurance. We're going to do that with government life. All right? And then we're going to build down to the plan that the employees have, the same copays, the same deductibles, the same co-insurances. So the employees will feel the same thing they feel now with the current plan. All right? But it's going to be less than what your current plan is. All right? Bo, I'm going to let Bo go into detail about how the EAP works. That's what we call it.
Yeah, it's a, what we call this program is the employer aggregate protector. Unfortunately, it's a bad acronym in EAP, and you think of EAP as something else. But like you said, we take that high deductible and we build down to your current 2,000. So we're not changing your risk under the 2,000 that you currently have, but there is a risk from other people who propose a higher deductible like we are. The difference between our plan and anyone else is that safety net. And I think the difference with my understanding being greater than others, I sit in your seat. I'm a city councilman in Nashville, Tennessee. I know you can't dwell on what ifs, and if you have a good claims year, or you know, let's go consistently with what you've been having, because that could change. I mean, if you go up to a $5,000 deductible, you've got a million dollars worth of risk in that HRA if you build it down to a zero deductible. You're flying without a net. And that's what we are. We've got the safety net. We've got the stop-loss coverage that limits, I can tell you the last dollar you're going to pay from that $6,000 deductible down to that $2,000 deductible. I call it sleeping insurance. It allows my clients to lay their head down on the pillow at night and go to sleep, not worrying that this plan is going to cost them any more than what we say it's going to cost. You know, from our estimations, your renewal coming in, you know, over $1.7 million. We were able to go out and get that $6,000 deductible plan for right at $800,000. Then we put, as he said, the bucket, the employer aggregate protector portion is the portion paying the claims from $6,000 down to $2,000 that the employees aren't going to see. Then, you know, they think they still have a $2,000 deductible or with an HRA down to $250,000. That portion is below over $551,000, right at $552,000. So we cap the risk. You know, I think earlier on, someone said the risk would be $500,000. They project the risk to be $500,000. Well, your risk would be a million. You know, it could go up. Not with this. We're capping that, so I can tell you that last dollar. You've still got that risk down low that you currently already have dealt with on the HRA down to $250,000. But we've projected, you know, building back down to the $2,000 deductible, we're under $1.5 billion coming in. And I think it's pretty consistent with what you currently are paying. As well as your HRA through 11 months, we're at $150,000. Looks like it's going to finish up about $165,000. So we're coming in over $200,000 savings of your renewal. With the guarantee of capital. My desire is that $551,954.02, you know, you'll see on our proposal, we have a minimum savings. That's what we can carve in stone. The expected savings is if you do have a good claims year, you're going to have, you know, $110,000 left in that $550,000 bucket. You're going to have that money left over. Right now, you're going to send it to Blue Cross, and they're going to say, thank you. If you had a good claims year, they appreciate the, you know, extra profit you're sending them. Our plan just takes Blue Cross profit and leaves it at all, if there is that profit. And it's consistently working in counties and cities across Tennessee. We've got a little over 200 groups doing this, and we're saving on average a 22% off the renewal. Can I guarantee that to you? No, I guarantee this number on the paper, which is 15, 16% right now. But we hope it's more. What you're also getting with us is you're getting financial blueprints, staff, as well as health cost solutions staff. I'm going to assign an account manager here that will give you monthly reports. You're going to get monthly reports like you're self-funded, because you are under the portion of it for that $6,000 and $2,000. You're going to know where your money's going. Hey, is our actuals costing us? Is a medical claim, what's costing us? Where's our money going? Which providers are we paying? Things of that nature. Then that account manager will come meet as often as you want. We set up quarterly meetings to do a quarterly report, just to show you where you're at. But I mean, you know, I've got a number of clients in the Chattanooga area and, you know, Bradley County. So I'm here in the area all the time, as well as Mr. Hartman. You know, we'll stop by as much as your staff has time to sit. You know, usually, you want someone who's going to answer the phone when you have an issue, when you have a problem. We've got over 30 claims payers that are going to be paying the claims, so that's never going to be an issue. We're following the Blue Cross high deductible plan. So, I mean, this seems to be a win-win. It's the employees are getting the exact same benefits that you asked us to clothe, and that's what we're clothing. Like we said, we got in and out Wednesday, and it was due Friday morning at 9:00 a.m., so I left awfully early to get down here. So we're doing the same exact plan, but we're providing a safety net. So if someone's going to raise your deductible, they better have a method in which they can say, the money's going to stop, or if it does cost, they better give you an idea where you can find the revenue. Because I've said in your seat, and when money comes due, you've got to find it somewhere. You either got to cut somewhere, or you got to produce more revenue. And, you know, when you have an HRA that has a high exposure, you know, you could have that bad year, they say, in claims. But we've got that safety net and that stop-loss policy that will save you the money. I'd like to stop now and just try to address any questions that you guys may have for Tim or myself.
Gentlemen?
Can I just add one thing?
Yes, sir, please.
Do I have time to add one more thing?
Please.
You know, look, we wanted to get to the math, because the math is pretty good, right? And I know that's what you have. But another question you had was about taking care of your employees. And I just want to tell you something. You know, there's no magic bullet for taking care of employees. I mean, if an employee has a claims issue, somebody has got, a real person has got to take the call, has got to care about the situation, and they may have to call doctors, they may have to call hospitals. I'll give you a couple of examples of customer care services that you get into, that you don't, it changes every time. We had an employee that got shot in another county. And his bills were enormous. He was a county employee. His bills were enormous. And so, you know, the OBs are coming in, and some doctors are paying us. Well, we had, we can't, we thought, well, wait a minute. Was he on somebody's property when he got shot? And he was, obviously. And so we pursued, we decided, why don't we pursue it as a liability issue? And again, and now it's a liability issue, and the insurance is off the hook. And I just wonder, had we not gotten involved, if that would have happened? Another thing, a lady used this machine to test her blood, because she had, her blood was too thick, and we figured out this was a city employee. And she was having to go to a clinic every day, or every other day, to have tests, or you've got to go to stop half your day. Well, we, Blue Cross actually denied the machine, the initial, they denied giving her a new machine so she could test her blood. So again, we got the call, we could have said, well, Blue Cross denied it, that's it, we can't do anything about it. We didn't. So we asked, well, why did you deny? And they said, well, it's because it's so expensive. We called Blue Cross, and that's what they told us. We found her machine. We got on the internet, found her machine, and Blue Cross agreed, uh, machine. And one of the advantages of, you have, you control the bucket. Here's one of the advantages. If there is some quirky, odd situation, you all have the authority. If you control the bucket, you can actually, you can request that the bucket pay for that claim. You can change, Blue Cross, if they'll move, okay, they will move. But you all can do that. So the plan that we decide is, besides being, having a good cost, it is a plan that gives you all the stability you don't have. All right?
And the last thing is compliance. We have a compliance officer on staff. I mean, she, all day, every day, is ACA, healthcare report, you know, plant documents. So, you know, all that is covered for you. So, you know, there's no issues there, no worries. Anything your staff are made, that's not going to cost you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you for your attention.
We appreciate you. All right. Now, we will get to insurance.
Well, thank you very much. I'm Timmy, just, this is different from Russell. We are both partners and insurers. The Insurty Group was formed in 2006. We're five partners. We are not just an independent agency, but we are a partner and casualty agency, along with personal management. Just like the last gentleman, we got into the game late. So therefore, we are a little more limited with what we bring to the table than what you would come at 80 plus. As he said, as a broker and as an agent, we all work off the same things. I can bring a plan design to you similar to what he's bringing to you. But at the end of the day, it's got to be what the city is looking for. We try to bring something to the table that will be comparable to what you have currently, and try to make it as cost-effective as possible. Now, I guess the question that I have, and this can be addressed by you guys, what is it that you have budgeted for your insurance program? Obviously, you received a 14% increase this year. You know, you do have extremely rich benefits that you offer. Now, yes, I can come in, I can change the plan design, I can raise the deductibles, I can raise the out-of-pocket maxes, I can raise the doctor visit copay, the prescription drug card, but that has an effect on the employees. So in the whole grand scheme of things, what is it that gets your budget as well as basically needs of the employees? Now, I will spend a lot of time going through the numbers that we've got, but I want to tell you a little bit about who we are. The Insurty Group are locally owned insurance agents. We are here in Chattanooga, Tennessee. We have a staff of 18 employees that work directly with you and your employees. We are 10 minutes away from the City of East Ridge. I am a City of East Ridge, I used to live here. I would rather live in the City of East Ridge or from East Ridge High School. So I've spent my entire life, I understand what the city is about. So I just want to touch base on what the Insurty Group does and what we can do for the City of East Ridge. I don't know if you want to address anything or not. Okay. So in talking about the Insurty Group, the Insurty Group, we are locally owned agency. We have a staff of 18 employees. We are one of 66 independent agencies throughout the United States that are a part of an organization called Benefit Advisory Network. We are the only agency in Chattanooga that will ever be a part of Benefit Advisory Network. Now, what that gives you, what that gives us, we have a representation of 1,000 employees throughout the United States. We have legal staff onboard. We have a compliance director. We have a medical director. We have a pharmacy director. All of that work for you. All of those services can be used by you and the employees of the City of East Ridge. We talked about our staff. You will have a dedicated account manager that will be solely and working with you and the employees of East Ridge. They will do, we will do the one-on-one enrollment. We will be here to work on claims administration. We will do all of the needs that you want us to do. We will become an extension of your HR department. We will do as much as you will allow us to do, as little as you want us to do. But we want you to know that we are here, and that we will benefit you in any way that we can. Now, we talked about the plan design. Obviously, today is June the 30th. Your plans are new tomorrow. My recommendation for the City of East Ridge would be to renew with Blue Cross. Obviously, if you chose to move to UnitedHealth, because that could be done, but it certainly wouldn't be easy to get it done in that time period. We talked about, I'm going to address a lot that's hardly been addressed, but one of the things that we would recommend is still offering the dual option with the Network S and the Network P. The Network S in Chattanooga is still a very good network. And with the savings that it comes with, I think most of your employees would agree, all of their doctors are participating in Network S. It's only limited with a hospital and you know the doctors that are in town. So I think the savings that it generates, giving employees a choice is as much of a benefit as anything. So limiting them with just one network and one plan design, I don't think that's doing a justice to your employees. So I would recommend that you continue to offer the dual option using the Network P and the Network S. I give you, I hope that you had an opportunity to go through the proposal, look at what we had to offer. Like I said, we tried to match as close to your current plan as we could. So we've given you a few options to choose from with minor changes to your deductible and minor changes to your out-of-pocket max. There are, just trying to keep in mind that we want to offer the best benefits for your employees that are possible. Now, when you look at your Blue Cross renewal, you've got a 14% rate increase this year. Now, I know that sounds like a lot, but all of us that are in this industry understand that 9% of your increase is just medical inflation. 9% of your increase is a trend increase. And I looked at your renewal, I walked through your setting here, you got a 5.86% increase due to your risk adjustment. Well, that tells me that you obviously have some claims out there. So for me to come in and sit here and tell you that I think that you should go self-insure, I think that would be foolish on my part to recommend that you do that. What you guys are doing with the HRA, I think is fantastic. I think it's probably shown, it's generated use of savings over the past couple of years. So I would recommend keeping the HRA intact. Now, if you raised the deductible to get some cost savings, or you raised the out-of-pocket maxes to get some cost savings, well, obviously, that's going to increase your exposure to your HRA unless you're going to pass some of that along to the employees. You have a $250 deductible, you have a $250 max out-of-pocket for the individual, that is unheard of in our industry. So it's great benefits to the employees, but it also comes with a cost. So I think when you look at your plan, and you look at where you're at with your budget, then you determine what type of plan that you need to work with. And obviously, if you need to make some changes and pass along to the employees, then I think that's the appropriate thing to do. But to come in to make drastic changes to your plans, I think the disruption that you would have with your employees would be far greater than the cost it would be to keep it intact the way it is. The dental insurance, same thing. I agree with all of them that you should keep the dental insurance through Blue Cross Blue Shield. Number one, Blue Cross Blue Shield's dental insurance has the largest network of, in-network providers that are available. So what that does for you and your employees is that you're going to get a 25% discount off bill charges. Most other dental insurance pilots or companies, they don't have that ability to have a network of dentists that's participating. So I certainly recommend that you keep the dental insurance with Blue Cross. Same thing with vision insurance. It's not a huge expense, it's not a great benefit. I mean, it's something that if you need glasses, you're going to buy it. If you don't need glasses, there's no reason to take it. It's a small amount of money that you're spending for that coverage. They're all about the same. I would recommend just keeping it with Blue Cross, it all comes in one bill. Now, one recommended, next recommendation that I would make would be on the life insurance. Each of them have talked about the life insurance. Here, one came in at $0.09 per thousand for the life insurance. Sun Life came in at $0.18 per thousand for the life insurance. Well, we got a quote from Mutual of Omaha for $0.12 per thousand for life insurance. So I would recommend that the life insurance certainly be moved to Mutual of Omaha. Same benefits, $20,000 for life insurance for each of your employees, $5,000 for a dependent, $2,500 for a child. It's not a huge sum of money, but there again, it's not one of those things that you're going to use every day. Take advantage of the savings that come with it. So we talked about the dental, the life, and the vision. Now, with the medical insurance, as you've seen in our proposal, we are offering some options for you to choose from. We didn't make full our drastic changes. I don't think that you as an employer would make those drastic changes if you don't have to. So I have given you some options, raising the deductible by $500, raising the max out-of-pocket by $500, changing the doctor visit copays from where they're at now, changing those by $5. That gets your increase down to right at an 11% or 8% increase over what you currently have. Like I said, I don't know what you have budgeted, but knowing you've gone through this process before, I would expect you probably had an increase in your budget for medical insurance. So depending on what your circumstances are, as an agent, we can bring to the table everything that everybody else can. The fact is, you've got to choose an agent that you're comfortable with, that you know is going to be here and do the things that you need done. And we think at Insurty Group, us being a local agent, that we can do that and bring that to the table. I will commit to our service. I think we have a great staff at our office. They do a wonderful job. Right now, we represent the City of Roanoke. We have for the past 10 years, we've represented the town of Decatur. We represent Savannah Valley Utility District. We have 250 clients on our books right now. Not all of them are municipalities, but insurance is insurance. So the service that we provide to one client will provide to the other, and we would do the same for the employees of the City of East Ridge.
Tim, we're welcome. I'd just like to add a couple of things that we have to say here. You know, everybody was getting into this late in the game. I think one thing that as commissioners that you really need to consider and look at is what is the program that you currently have? Who do you feel is the best to serve that business today? And stay pretty much with what you have. And before renewal next year, call everybody in that wants to bid on it, and let them put together some options for you where you can look at, and then you put your RFP out based on the best option for the city. For you to get into it in a two or three week notice and start making changes, it's just going to be a big cluster. And you don't need that for your employees or for the city. So you need to keep that in mind. Raised there in East Ridge, the luck business out here in East Ridge. I bid on a major contract with the City of Nashville, didn't get it. We was a low bid. We didn't get it because we went local. My recommendation, whether you use us or not, is to utilize somebody local that's going to be here that if you need somebody in the road or not having to come from outside Chattanooga to handle that, do it where it's 10, 15 minutes or 30 minutes away from your operation, and make sure that you're getting the best service that you possibly can. Not that these other companies aren't good companies, they are. And I have nothing to say bad about anybody, but let's look at local presence, just like Nashville does, and speak with somebody local that's really going to give you the service that you need. Any questions?
Gentlemen? Any questions?
I want to, I want to do that, imagine that, how's y'all's policy, how we're doing, and they've talked about it earlier.
Just like he had spoken, with Blue Cross, you have generic preferred and non-preferred drugs. They are specific to the different tiers. So whether or not you go with Blue Cross's 840/60 drug card, 1035/50 drug card, it is specific to generic preferred and non-preferred. With United Healthcare, like he said, it is tiered. We have United Healthcare at our office, that's who we are insured with, so I'm familiar with it. They do have tiered plans. You've got tier one, tier two, and tier three. You may have some name brand drugs that are falling under the lowest tier of tier one, which would be a $10 drug. But you may have some generics that have high uses that United Healthcare has placed in tier three, which would be a $60 tier drug. So that is the way United just does it, a little bit different than what Blue Cross does. We have not experienced any of the issues with the prescription drug plan with United Healthcare like this gentleman has spoke about. Like I said, we are insured through United Healthcare ourselves, and I haven't dealt with that issue. But he is correct in saying that they are tier one, tier two, tier three versus generic preferred, non-preferred.
Okay, anything else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Fair enough. All right. All right. Let's prove, take it deeper.
Thank you all for letting me be here, listening to me. I'm John Davis. I'm going to pass out a copy of the business United turned in, just so you have one. Now, if you'll throw it inside here, there's a, there's a place where it naturally opens. I'm going to ask you to just take a glance at this. I don't know where it's implemented. I saw a sheet that was up the front. We actually quoted eight Blue Cross plans, 99 healthcare plans, and two signal plans, so that you have lots of choices. With all that said, you know, you've heard three different people, and I will tell you that there's no bad one in the market. Blue Cross, or United, or Signal, all are very good companies. And all of them work for you. Anyone of them can choose. So I want to keep it kind of simple. If you can turn to this place where it naturally opens, and then turn back to the front webpage, there's a Blue Cross alternative, and there's a United Healthcare alternative, and a Signal alternative. Now, in front of that is a comparison to your current Blue Cross Blue Shield. And the best way to put this, guys, is, ladies, is that it boils down to which broker you want to use. Because at the end of the day, we can all get you the same formula. All of these insurance companies will honor whatever the lowest bid is. If I'm named your broker, and I can go get somebody else's bid, if somebody else has named it, if Amichus has named your broker, he can go get these bids. There's no secret. So we quoted a plethora of options for you, but you have each one you want. It just depends on which one appeals most to you. Now, I agree that keeping S and P is a good idea if you keep Blue Cross. Why? Because S saves us money. And there's no need in the world going totally with P when people will buy S and it's less expensive. That's a waste. Any big box store relative to the drugs, even though you've got a 1035/50 copay, you go to Walmart, Kmart, CVS, Walgreens, and most all of them have a $4 generic drug program. That's cheaper than your $10 copay. And so, any of that works. You can use a $10 copay, or you can just go with a $4 drug. It's just being smart and soon. The one thing I would call your attention to is that the difference in the plan, this is what you have, or what you had. This is just a picture form. Share, I ran out, I ran out pictures of you. What you're looking at is the, is just a picture of what you have.
So the city, the employee, the green down there pays the first $250, and then the city reimburses the next $1,750 on your current plan. Then Blue Cross Blue Shield pays after you hit that $2,000 one. And that's just the way that's worked. Now, contrast that, the $400 deductible works this way. And again, it's just easier to see it in a picture than it is for me to try to tell you about. So what this does is you've actually bought a $4,000 deductible, and the city pays 90% of the bill. But that includes doctor visits or anything else that's not medication. So what that does is it increases your risk. There's nothing wrong with increasing risk. You just need to know that you're doing it regardless of which one of you should do business with. So you're increasing the city's liability for the amount that's going to be reimbursed under an HRA or medical expense reimbursement plan by more than double what it has been in the past by taking those co-pays out and raising that deductible up. I just want you to be aware of what you're doing. There's nothing wrong with it. You just have increased the risk to the city substantially. The other thing you've done is the employees really don't have any skin in the game anymore. If I know I can get 90% of my bill paid, no matter what I have done, there's nothing, there's nothing really stopping me or slowing me down from going and having a service done. The city has always been very generous to its employees. And again, there's nothing wrong with it. That's what you want to do. Just be sure this is what you want. I think personally, that having a little skin in the game, in other words, having an employee pay the first $250 or paying $20 co-pay for primary care or $40 specialist, I think that, that means the employee has some skin in the game. They have to pay something because health insurance is not free. So we want them to pay something. We want them to pay a part of it. The question is, to you all, how much do you want? Now, if we use this, and again, your liability under this $4,000 deductible plan, the one with the stripe on it that I just handed you, is more than double what it is currently. So if you want to change carriers, by the way, you want to keep Blue Cross Blue Shield for a month, any of the other carriers will let you change as of August 1st, and they'll hold the rate for you. In other words, there's no rate change. So if you did want to make a change, you can do that with no penalty. You can renew Blue Cross for a month and then change if that's what you wish to do. So that's an option that's totally important. In terms of the other benefits, you look at this sheet. It's right beyond right of it. For the front, from the photo sheet, you can see that we quoted Group Life of Hartford Union, Vision with Blue Cross, Dental with Blue Cross, and Long Term Disability with Hartford Union. So let me say this, on long-term disability, I'm really concerned. I'm more concerned about claim payment than I am anything else. I've won three awards from three different insurance companies for selling disability over the years. I know who pays the claims. I want to put you with the company not just because of not based on cost alone, but based on their performance for your people when your people need them to pay. So that's key on this, and that's why I think Union and Hartford are really good bets if you want to do long-term disability. We've talked about long-term disability at least three different times during my tenure with the city, and you all have elected not to take that coverage. But if you want it, yes, it's wonderful. Why would I not want you to buy something from me? So, you know, there's a self-interest there for me selling you long-term disability, but I would agree that it is a good coverage to have. And frankly, it's the first thing I bought when I started in the business myself. So these three plans, the alternative, Blue Cross Blue Shield, you can see it, I'm looking on this sheet. This is the $4,000 deductible where the employee would pay 10% of the bill, up to $400, and then it's capped, and Blue Cross Blue Shield pays those claims. So that's $1,198. We've got three different censuses. I've used one of them here based on your most recent bill from Blue Cross. And then United Healthcare with alternative. It's basically the same plan, it's just a little bit cheaper. If you want to do a partially self-insured plan, Signet is the way to go. This says that you would pay, if you look at the third column, you'd pay $365,000. Theoretically, if you had no claims, that's all you paid this year. What you would do is put another million, 1,71,000, $1,71,997 into a bucket, into an interest-bearing checking account. That would do that for you, I'm sure. So that puts that money into a checking account, and if you have claims, they take the money out. If you don't have claims, the money stays there, it belongs to the city, to you, Trish. Unlike one of the earlier plans, if you terminated this plan at the end of the year, you could walk away, and that's all you would ever owe is the money in that bucket, totally made so. So if you wanted to do this, all three of these plans have that same 10% employee pay. They have the drug card. In other words, the plan and the employee is the same all the way across the board. You can take any of them. In religious terms, many, I'm agnostic about which plan you want. As long as the city's happy, the employees are happy, doesn't matter the minute. So what we're doing at JMD Group is we have moved toward employee services. We're moving really away from just being an insurance firm. I have with me Don Rowe here in the second row. He is the managing director of Proessential Group. These other two gentlemen are my young employees. So if you think that my hair's getting too gray and I may not be around, I've got two people right behind me that can still take care of it. Any rate, we're a partner with Proessential Group. This is an exclusive national alliance. It's similar to what Mr. Echus mentioned. He's with a different group. But our alliance has consulting firms like ours. There's 55 of them throughout the United States. And we leverage our partnership to bring customers like the city best-in-class tools, resources, and knowledge combined with local expertise and experience. So it gives us access to vendor research, to market trends, to compliance tools, HR support, and customized technology for folks like you. So one of the things we do is we're not only going to do one-off one-enrollments for your people like we always have, but they'll have electronic enrollment capability as well. So when we get that, when we get the meeting with the employees, we will electronically enter that, and that will be transferred electronically to an insurance carrier of your choice. We'll monitor life event changes. We'll automatically get to the carriers without your involvement. Not only will your employees be able to call us as they always have, but they'll also have a central call center to back us up. We'll also do a monthly billing audit and reconciliation to make sure that the city is paying the right amount of money to the right carrier at the right time, and that your payment or your bills match the number of people covered. Our technology will assure compliance with things relative to the Obamacare legislation. So we're going to do all of the compliance for you, including showing you how to calculate full-time employees and how to do the 1094 and 1095 forms if that's required. So all of this makes for more and more employees a greater satisfaction and fewer interactions with HR. Now, I might point out here that, that our tools that we use are not dependent on any particular payroll service. So you can use any payroll service you like, and ours does still work. Some of these kind of tools have to be partnered with a certain payroll service. Our HR experts can be your back office. We're supporting you with answers via phone or email with questions on HR as they arise. You have an access to our online HR benefits locker. HR training video modules are available. And your HR person, in this case, Trish, can tap into our HR help desk whenever she needs. And that means she can email or get on the phone, call somebody, and ask a question whenever she needs it. We also offer, we've got news, forums, training, webinars. We have a team of attorneys that is at your disposal if you need a legal opinion, and you can give that to us through Proessential. Population health management is an optional service. Back when Tim was here, we talked about doing wellness plan. We can offer wellness through Proessential. We can do a comprehensive wellness plan. We can also, Dr. Keith Help, some of you know here in town, has a wellness program called One-on-One. We can get them involved, and they have a very involved wellness program if you all want to do it. We did it with Tim, the city manager here, and the next person who came around was not in favor of doing wellness, so we didn't follow through on it. But it's there if you want to do it. We can even go so far as to have a health advocacy coach for your people in tandem with the wellness program, if that's what you want to do. So we talked a little bit about what we do going forward. I want to take you backwards. So if you look at the top of the sheet, there's a red number highlighted in red. I think our history with the city should be somewhat valuable. It speaks to the service that we've already provided and what you could expect from us going forward. So if you look at the top, when we took over your plan for the state of Tennessee, your cost is $1,511,000 and a change. Going down through here, that was in '07. If you go down through here, and yellow highlighted is the annual cost each year since that time. I think this page speaks for itself in terms of our results. I hope you agree. We've saved considerable money. In '09, we started doing the health reimbursement arrangement where we bought a higher deductible from the insurance company and still gave you a lower deductible. For a long time, we had a secret deductible. But we bought a higher deductible because it saves us money. That methodology has worked all along. It still works, there's nothing different about it. The question is, how much risk do you want to take? In other words, how much do you want to pay fixed costs from the insurance company? And how much risk does somebody want to take? So how much risk, how much risk does the city want to take in terms of unknown? Guys, what do you demand? You gotta let him, Mike. So, so again, relative to service and relative to our history, I talked to Don in my office, and I can produce it if you'd like. We've got 225 emails from Trish over the last two years, well, just from Trish. I'll tell you that Eddie Phillips visited my office often. We always took care of him. If Kim is down in Camp Jordan and she has a question, and she says to me, and she did, "What am I going to do about my child who's 26 years old?" She knows I'm approachable, she knows I'll get her an answer. If I see Mike down in GT Disturbers, he knows I'm approachable. He knows he can ask him, and he knows I'll help him. When Frida was still here, same thing. If I, any of your people, if I see Bruce out on the street somewhere, he doesn't hesitate to come and ask me a question about insurance, and he knows he'll get an answer from it. He knows I'll help him. So that's what we're all about. In fairness, we've done health fairs for the last several years. We organize those, we've gotten the vendors to you. You all haven't done anything to do that, we've done it for you. I've worked with nine city managers over the last 20 years. All of them, all of them in the group, liked me pretty well. So I don't know exactly what I did to get fired, but I would, I would hope that perhaps you all will see your way clear of giving me my job back and let me continue to work for the city. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Gentlemen, you put your door rates up.
That's for that, that's for that $400 deductible plan, Jack. That's where the city pays 90% of $4,000, and the employee pays 10% of $4,000.
Anything else?
Thanks, sir.
Thank you all for having me.
Counsel, I spent a lot of time on his list, listening to each of these presentations. We have an excellent group to choose from. Really, without further ado, I'll ask anyone, like, to make a motion. If, if you have questions.